Hi, everybody. I'm here with Grace Rex. She is running for school board in the new district that right now is being called Tempanogus, but may or may not change. The district covers Orem, Vineyard, Linden, and Pleasant Grove. And she's running for a seat that essentially covers the east side of Orem. Grace, along with her husband Alan, have raised 10 kids in Orem. She's a graduate from BYU with a degree in history and has a deep passion for education. All of her children attended public school, with seven graduating from Orem High School. By the way, bravo. I can only claim five, but that's alright. Her youngest turned her curiosity towards, her youngest three currently are at Centennial Elementary, Lakewood Junior High, and Orem High School. So you still have kids in school?
Yes.
Alright, so she is very busily involved and has very much an eyes-on-the-ground look at what's going on in our education system. Through experience navigating various programs from advanced learning labs to IEPs for dyslexia, Grace understands the diverse needs of students, whether they are high achievers or require specialized support. She knows the importance of parental involvement in education and will work to make sure the new district supports families and parents. Beautiful. Grace is a dedicated volunteer. In fact, I'm just gonna say this real quick. There's not a position in the district that it looks like she hasn't served in, alright? School, community councils, above and beyond all of them. She's been on a district school, community council, representing, what is it, Centennial Elementary?
And Cascade.
And Cascade. So she's lived the education life for a long time, 25 years. And that's impressive. So she really knows what it comes, what it's about when it comes to education. Anyway, so we will step in, and she's also been president, the PTA, vice president. They've led several initiatives and have done some amazing work. But let's get into, I don't want to do all the talking, so we're gonna jump into it here. So Grace, the first question I want to ask is the obvious one. You ask of anybody who's running for office, what in the world makes you want to run for school board?
Well, I still have three kids in Alpine School District and in public schools. And I'm really excited for the new school district, and I think it can be great. I've had a lot of experience, and I feel like I have a lot to contribute that could help our school district be really good. And I want to use my talents and the knowledge that I've gained after 25 years of helping in the schools to make this just a really, really great district.
Awesome. That's fantastic. Now, this is kind of a current event, and this actually will segue into some matters related directly to education. But obviously, we had a tragedy happen here in Orem this last week with the shooting of Charlie Kirk. Any thoughts from you about that?
I just think it's such a heartbreaking thing to have happen in our community. It was kind of surreal to hear about it. And I kind of heard first from my daughter, who was on lockdown at Lakewood at the time. And then I looked at the news and saw what had happened, and I was just kind of stunned. And it's so tragic that anybody could shoot somebody over their speech. But I have amidst all of the bad things about it, I've been so proud of our community and just how we've responded with prayers and hope and kindness. And I was really, really impressed with how Lakewood handled their lockdowns and how they kept the kids safe and not scared. And that was really, really a good, I guess, silver lining to a really sad thing. And I pray for Charlie Kirk and especially his wife and children. It's just very sad.
Thank you. I agree with you on all of that. It is a tragedy. But you're right, Orem and our whole Utah Valley community really stepped up, and it was beautiful to see. Alright, obviously, there was a shooting on a campus, and that was a tragedy. And we hear across the nation of things happening at schools that are pretty scary. Luckily, we haven't had anything other than a very minor incident in Orem. That was a couple of years ago at Mountain View High. There was a little incident. As a school board member, that's gonna be front and center, is keeping our kids safe and helping them feel like they're in an environment where they are safe. What steps, as a school board member, would you like to take in order to ensure that?
I believe that what the law that the legislature passed just recently can go a long way to helping keep us safe. I think that expanding security in the school is a good thing. I know that it is on the tops of the minds of all the educators, especially administrators. And they try really hard to do all kinds of things to keep us, to keep our kids safe. It was really nice to hear the principal at Lakewood talk about what they did to keep the kids safe when they saw all of the kids running, well, when they looked out the window, they found out about the shooting, looked out the window and saw, because they're right next to UVU, they saw all of those college kids running literally towards their school. And they didn't know if the shooter was one of them or who it would be, so they quickly locked everything down to make sure the school was safe. And then they were able to just use procedures that they have in place, and they're practicing on a daily basis, well, not daily, but on a regular basis. So I think the schools are doing a good job of making sure our kids are safe but not making it so that they're scared all the time either. And we want our kids to be happy at school, not scared to be there. So.
Yeah, that's right. I mean, school should be, I mean, it's a place of learning, and it's a place where you work hard, but it should also be a place where you have connections, where you have that socialization, where you get to know friends and classmates. So it's nice to have that kind of environment. I appreciate you saying it's more than just, you know, this cell that we put kids into. It needs to be a positive uplifting place. So thank you. Well, obviously, the big thing that's gonna happen for the new school board is, you're a new school board with a brand-new district. And one of the first things that's gonna happen is you're gonna have to hire a new superintendent. And as anybody who's worked in the school knows, the superintendent really truly sets the tone for the whole district. What will be your process? What will you look for in a superintendent? How do you make sure you get the right person?
That's a really good question, because I do think it is one of the, well, probably especially at the beginning, the most important thing that the school board will do, is to elect or not, well, to hire a new superintendent. And we need to make sure that it's somebody of really good character, who knows our values in our area and will help those values stay. It needs to be somebody with vision, a vision that will take our district and make it really great. It needs to be somebody who can communicate well. And because you have to communicate what you're trying to do to the families so that they can be on board and so the vision can happen, and for teachers to be on board. So those are some of the main qualities I personally would be looking for.
Excellent. And obviously, after you hire the superintendent, the next thing that's gonna happen is with this new district, boundaries are gonna have to shift, alignment, it's all gonna happen. How do we go about that? I mean, you've got a lot of stuff that's gonna happen when this district starts up.
It's true. And there are a lot of hard decisions that not everybody will be happy with, whatever is made. So we have to do what is best for the whole community. And, well, for instance, the boundary issue, I think one of the first things that needs to happen is a boundary study of all the schools, so that we don't have schools that are overcrowded like Cascade and Vineyard, and then some that are struggling to stay open because they're losing population. And I think, and especially in Pleasant Grove, because all the boundaries there in Pleasant Grove, some of the kids are going to American Fork schools and some are going to Pleasant Grove schools. And we'll need to make it so that the schools are more equal in population. And I personally would love to see ninth grade taken to the high school if possible, and especially true feeder schools. A feeder school is when the school, the elementary school goes to the same junior high, and the same junior high all goes to the same high school. And it solves a lot of issues with miscommunication and academically. It is, it's hard for, some high schools do things differently. So if you have in a junior high, kids going to two separate high schools, it's hard for those counselors to actually give good information to the kids of what classes they need to take and how they need to do it. And it's not that the counselors aren't trying, they get confused, people slip through the cracks. It's just so much easier for programs, athletics, arts programs, everything if we have true feeder schools, and especially if we take ninth grade to the high school.
So trying to keep cohorts together, so you don't lose your friends when you change schools. Give us a little bit more insight. I mean, the reason I say this is, I grew up, ninth grade was in junior high. It seemed fine to me. But what's the reasoning behind putting ninth grade in high school? It seemed like that's a pretty important thing to you. And I'm not disagreeing, but give us some ideas of what benefits you see to that.
Well, it will really help all the programs academically. And I have yet to find a teacher in junior high or high school that doesn't think ninth grade in the high school is a good idea. So academically, it will help, because in ninth grade, all of their, everything they do counts for college. And a lot of times, kids don't take that seriously until they get into high school. And if they can actually do ninth grade in the high school, then they have more opportunities. If you are an advanced kid, they can do AP classes earlier. And they can be in, on the track team and all these other things. Right now, parents are taking their kids from the junior high. They pick them up early and take them to the high school to do different classes there. And it's very hard on families, and it just opens up a lot of opportunities. And some of our high schools are small enough that they're having, they're having a hard time getting enough teachers, because you can only have a certain amount of teachers based on population, to give a really good curriculum for kids to choose and have a lot of options. And that would allow us to have more options in the high school. So I think it would be a really good idea for everybody.
Excellent. And of course, the Utah state law basically considers ninth grade, well, they consider high school to be a four-year curriculum.
Yes.
And so that certainly aligns with what we see in Utah in the state code. The other thing that struck my mind when we were talking about is concurrent enrollment. I don't believe, as I recall, that concurrent enrollment is really available in junior high. Maybe it is, maybe it's not, but it seems like it would be a lot easier for concurrent enrollment to happen for ninth graders if they were in the same building as everybody else. Is that what you think too?
Oh, yes. And concurrent enrollment is based a lot on the teachers have to be able to teach the concurrent enrollment, and they have to be approved by the college to teach it. So generally, the junior high school teachers don't have that ability to teach those classes. So there might be a junior high teacher somewhere that I don't know about that can teach concurrent enrollment, but I haven't seen it personally.
So a lot more opportunities for ninth graders if they're in high school with everybody else?
Yes.
Excellent.
Lots of opportunities.
Alright, one of the big things that's gonna be coming up with the division of the school district into three is you have to divide the assets. Now, I gotta think that as a mother of 10, that you've had to do some pretty serious negotiation with your kids. And you've had to tell your kids no sometimes. How will that portray or parlay into making sure that, without being mean or stingy, that we in this, what's called the Tempanogus district, get our fair share of the assets of the old school district?
That's a really good question, because it is a big deal. We're so nice here in Orem that we tend to give up a lot, and we don't want to be taken advantage of. But the good news is, in the meetings that I have been in, especially when I go to school board meetings and talk to the other school board members, nobody wants to take advantage of any of the other districts. If it's done, I think at the moment, it'll be without them really realizing they're doing it. That's why we need to be very aware and have people, intelligent people, looking at the numbers and making sure it is very fair. But I also don't want to, we need to have good feelings in between and really believe that there is good intent in all those who are trying to split this district. There are people who want three strong districts. And so I think that is gonna be attainable. I like the idea that anything that is disputed will then go to arbitration. And I think the law that they just passed is gonna help with a lot of those things. And we need to be able to work together, especially at the beginning, because things like busing will need probably to help to use the American Fork and the Bus Depot. And so maybe there will be some kind of trade-off for that until we can build our own bus station and things like that.
And do you see the possibility of maybe some types of services being administered jointly? I mean, there's no reason that any new school district has to do everything on their own. Is that a possibility?
Yes, I think it's a great possibility. And I think if we could keep good relations between all of those, all of those that are in the school districts, that we can have nice accommodating, an accommodating division that will make everybody feel like we weren't trying to take advantage of each other, but just trying to make good school districts.
So you may start out with shared transportation, you may start out with, and keep on with like consortiums for purchasing materials, whatever you can do to lower prices without giving away any control from your own district, that sort of thing.
We also don't have a special needs school in our area. And until we can get our own, we will have to share some of those resources. And I think there's a lot of different ways we can do it.
So obviously, cooperation is, it's much better than competition in this case. Excellent. So we talked a little about transportation. Anything else we need to talk about on that front with the new split coming up?
Yes, we will need, well, we'll have enough buses to bus our kids, but we don't have a big enough place to put them. So that is something that will be an agenda item, deciding whether or not we're just gonna cooperatively use the Aspen Peaks, what they're calling Aspen Peaks District, and sharing that, which isn't a bad idea, because we've been sharing that so far. But that is one of the needs. And I do believe that busing is good, so that our kids can be safe.
Right. Now, we've mentioned that the district name temporarily is Tempanogus. You good with that? You wanna call it, you know, Allen Rex School District, anything like that? What name do you like?
Not Allen Rex School District.
As good of a guy as he is, right?
Actually, Allen Rex really doesn't mind. He likes the Tempanogus school name. I, for one, I don't dislike Tempanogus. I don't like how hard it is to spell. And having been in the schools, knowing how much they have to tell people how to spell it, like Sarah Park, we were at Sarah Park, and they would have to tell everybody how to spell Sarah, and that was a lot shorter. So it will be a little bit more challenging in that respect. So changing it to something like Temp would be easier for a lot of people. But I think it's something we should take to the community and see what all the other options are. And if everybody wants Tempanogus, let's do it. Tempanogus is a mountain right next to all of the cities that go in our district. So that's a great one. I've heard other names. I don't really love the name Geneva, but there are those who do. There are those who, I just talked to somebody who thought it would be fun to name it Mountain View District, because we can all see the mountains too. And if the other side of the lake is Lakeview, we could be Mountain View. But I think there are a lot of options, and I think we need to open it up to the community and just find out what everybody thinks, and then make a decision.
All I gotta say is, all my kids went to Orem High. Mountain View just sounds wrong. But that's just because of the rivalry there.
Just the rivalry.
Yeah, I get that. It's an ongoing process.
It doesn't for Tempanogus though, because Tempanogus is another.
Well, Tempanogus is hard, because you got Tempanogus High School, you got Temp View High School, you got Mount Tempanogus Temple. I mean, yeah, we got a lot of Tempanogus going around there. So that has its own challenges. So again, once the name's picked, I'm sure I'll be happy with it, but it's always fun to figure. You figure with 10 kids, you've had some experience with naming here, so you might be a real expert at this.
I like traditional names and things that are easy to spell, because I don't like to try to figure out how to spell everybody's name. But a lot of people like unique names, and that's not a bad thing either.
Well, I have seen names that I think I know how to spell, and then they spell it for me, and I go, that's nothing like what it looks like. So I do hope for me personally, that you'll pick a name, that when I hear it, I'll know how to spell it, alright? And this is coming from a guy whose last name is not Daw. It's Daw, D-A-W. Nobody knows how to spell Daw, so I'm with you there. You know, one of the last things that Alpine School Board did, I mean, because obviously Alpine School District is going to essentially cease to exist at the end of the school year, is they imposed a pretty substantial tax increase. Maybe that was good, maybe that was bad. What are your thoughts about that? And what will you do with that tax increase in the new school district, if anything?
I know a lot of people did not like that tax increase. And I was at, I didn't, I wasn't at the school board meeting, but I watched that one two different times through, watching all the people who got up and were really sad and worried about a tax increase right now. I understand why the district did it, because some people are really worried about the ability of all three districts to be able to handle it the first couple of years with all of the increased costs of splitting a district. But I would have preferred, had they not done it, and it allowed the districts themselves to decide whether they needed it. And so I think every district should, especially ours, look at their finances once they are separated and decide, do we really need this? And if we don't, then we should give the money back to the people.
Well, I like that answer. I like when money comes back. Well, and along those lines, obviously, the new district has a number of pretty old schools and a number of schools that really need some help. Now, Centennial's pretty new, and it's in good shape, but there's others in the district. Sharon's pretty old. There's others that are also getting a little long in the tooth. How are you gonna handle, I mean, you may not need new buildings, but you're gonna need to upgrade and retrofit some older buildings. What would be your priorities on financing those buildings?
I think we would need to give, well, when we do the plan, I think the new district school board needs to make a plan and make a couple of different options. And bring it to the community of, okay, these are our needs. We need to rebuild these schools. We need to, like, finish Pleasant Grove High School, needs to be finished with their rebuild. They have some pretty major issues over there. And many of the elementary schools still are seismically not safe. Lakewood's auditorium is just horrible. It should have been rebuilt years ago. And so there are just some needs that really need to happen, and we should assess what they are and then decide the best way to get it done. And maybe give an option, okay, it will take this long if we don't raise taxes. If we do a bond, it will, this is what we can do. And if we raise taxes a little bit, this is what we can do. And then take it to the people and decide what is the best for our community and what does everybody want to have happen? Is safety, if your school is not seismically safe? Is it worth it to do a bond so that you can have that school? Or is it not that necessary, and we can wait a few years and do it as we go? I think there's lots of options, and I'm hopeful, once the school board and we have a new superintendent and that we can come up with some great creative ideas of how to get things done.
You know, you've mentioned a couple of times, taking it to the people. Now, obviously, when a school board raises property tax, they are not obligated to put that to any kind of a vote. They have to have a hearing. But as we saw at Alpine, even though there were a lot of people who objected to that increase, they did it anyway. And again, go back to, you mentioned taking it to the people. What does that look like in your minds to make sure that you get a good assessment of what the people are open for, once they hear all of the options?
I think a good assessment, I mean, it's great to have people come, but that usually you only get a certain percentage of people that will come and actually be at a meeting, because everybody's busy. So we need to do it several ways. You have a meeting, and you have people come and discuss it that way. You have, you do a polling. I know that when, for example, when Cascade was being rebuilt, they gave them an option of having one-story building, but they would have to move over to Hillcrest, the old Hillcrest property for a year. And that would be a little bit disruptive, but then they could have a one-story building. Or they could just stay on campus, and they would build a two-story building behind them, and they wouldn't have to move, and it wouldn't be as disruptive. Well, you told the parents the option, and the options, the parents came back and said, it's worth the effort to go over to the Hillcrest property so that we can have a one-story building. We like that better. It'll be better in the long run. And I think if we treat parents and our community like adults, and they see all the options and why it's necessary, we will make really good decisions. I have a lot of faith in our great community.
Alright, so you definitely want to make sure that you not only get input from the parents and the citizens of the district, but that you will hold yourself to it. In other words, not ignore that assessment, but listen to it and modify your policy accordingly.
Yeah, especially if it's a majority. If it's just a small vocal person who is really upset about something, you can't just listen to the one. If the majority of parents and community members want it to be a certain way, you need to figure out how to work to make everybody, not everybody can't be happy. Some people are gonna be mad, unfortunately, but at least we can make the best decisions that way.
You know, years ago, when I was in the legislature, I had some parents come to me, and they were talking about the drama club down at Lakewood High, Lakewood Junior High. And they said that they had an event that was for girls only. And there was one of the students came, who was biologically a guy, but identified as a girl. And they said, I'm sorry, this event is for girls only. And the parents came, and with a full-on head of steam, saying, you need to affirm our kid, alright? And of course, the challenge with that is, if you're affirming them here, that means you have to affirm them when they go play sports, when they use the restroom, all of it. How will you handle that? Because I guarantee you, that's not an isolated incident. It's gonna happen again and again. How do you handle that?
Well, it's already happening in the schools. It's already happening. And my kids have friends that are transgender, that are gay, and that, or that are part of that community. And they are good friends with them, and they, I think, they can show love, but still stand up for their standards. And for me, it's all about safety. And it's not safe for biological boys to play sports with girls, biologically female girls, or be in their safe places, their dressing rooms or their bathrooms. I think Alpine School District has actually done a pretty good job of doing this and making sure that there is a personal, a single bathroom that those kids can go to if they don't feel comfortable going into the bathroom of their gender. And it's like I explained it, I know a lot of parents feel like their child would never do anything to hurt anybody else. And that's probably true for a majority of them. But there are bad actors, and they are hurting kids and women through the states. And we need girls to be able to be safe. And it's just simply not fair for girls to have to compete against a biological boy in sports. I have girls that play sports, and the thought, and I have six boys and four girls. My girls are very, very athletic and do really well, but they really can't compete against their brothers. It's just not possible. Boys and girls are biologically different. And so I have a hard line on that one. And I think that our school district has done a good job up to this point. I'd like to keep those policies so that our kids are safe.
Alright, and along those lines, one of the things that we see happening is there's a few, not many, but there's a few teachers who might try to affirm a transgender kid, maybe without their parents' knowledge. They may be doing it kind of surreptitiously. How will you deal with that? Because again, I believe that's something that probably is happening and will continue to happen. And clearly, there needs to be an approach to that.
Well, according to the Alpine School District, then the policy, as I know it right now, is that they can't call a child by another name unless the parent signs off of it. And it has to be done by a notarized signature right now, so that the parent can then decide whether or not that happens. So the policy is that you can't do anything like that without a parent's knowledge. And I think we should keep it that way, because parents need to be involved in any of those sensitive situations, for the good of the kids. And then we just make sure that the policy is followed.
And if teachers don't follow the policy, or if you catch teachers not doing that, I mean, hopefully that doesn't happen, but it may well.
Yeah, if that happens, then, and it's brought up, and it's caused a problem with the family, then appropriate action should be met.
You know, one of the first things that I did as a legislator way back in the day was I had a colleague who was a Democrat, interestingly enough, but she ran a bill to essentially say, if you are not proficient in reading by third grade, you have to repeat third grade. And I watched a lot of the education community. And I, I watched a lot of the education community basically lose their minds over that because it would hurt the kids' feelings and make them feel bad for not being with their cohort. Um, what do you think about that? Should we hold kids back by third grade if they can't read? Or how do we, how do we address that scenario?
That's a really good question. I had never heard of that bill in particular. I know a lot of third-grade teachers, there was a study done of people in correction facilities that they found out most people in correction facilities couldn't read past a third-grade level. And so then they feel like if a child doesn't get past that, then they're gonna go to prison. And I don't think that was the case either. I think there are a lot of people who don't go to prison that didn't learn how to read really well. This is something that I am a little bit passionate about because I have dyslexic children. Most of my kids are dyslexic and I've had to get private tutoring and other things to help them out. And I think that's one thing that we have a hard time here in Utah because we don't test for dyslexia. If we could test for dyslexia and then we would hit some of those problems. You can't even test for dyslexia. Here's the problem. You can't even test for dyslexia until third grade. Because up until then, it could be developmental. Every child develops at a different rate. And so in third grade, they could just suddenly click and it'd be fine. But, and maybe it's at the end of third grade that that happens. And if we hold them back, I can see why teachers would be a little bit concerned about that. I personally believe if we catch those issues like dyslexia and actually teach to help some of those things out, we won't have as many kids that have a hard time. One of the problems we've had is that the way we've taught kids how to read have been really bad for anybody that isn't a good reader. And now Alpine School District, I think it was the state actually, it's not something that as a school board are, just in our district school board that we can do much about. This is curriculum issues that is determined by the state. But they then started and made all the teachers go through a course, the Letters Course, which all of those things deal with a lot of the issues that dyslexic kids have. And so now they're trying to finally implement those things. And I've noticed as those changes happen, I'm thrilled because a lot of the issues my kids had will be a lot easier for the other kids that are going through them. Maybe they won't need the private tutoring because it's actually being done in school. I think those are the things that we need to help in that way, start at young. Find those, those learning disabilities and use effective ways of we, right now, we don't even test for dyslexia because then you'd have to actually deal with the problem and that could be caught, uh, it takes a lot of money to do that. And in Texas, they do, in Alaska, they do. And I know there are really good programs for that, that I would love to see implemented in our school district.
Now, is that something that you can do as a school board member? Or is that something you need to lobby the, the state for to, to fund and implement? Or is it a combination?
I think it's a combination because you have to, you have to have the testing available to do it. And that is expensive. So it is something that you'd have to look at pricing and how, if it's, if it can help those achieve, those kids achieve at a young age, then we wouldn't have as many problems as they get older.
All right. And so that's kind of the early years is, is reading. But of course, on the other end of the scale, there's a lot of students who are graduating from high school, but they really didn't graduate, if you know what I mean. In other words, yeah, they got their diploma, but they, they couldn't pass a, a basic GED test. And I don't know how many uh, students fit in that category, but I, I, I'd like to, I, I would hope it's small, but I don't think it is. Um, how do we ensure that when our students graduate, their diploma actually means I really am ready for college or for life, whatever it is?
Um, one of the ways that we could help that is by, well, not passing kids when they don't pass, making sure they actually um, know the information in the class that they're taking. And that's really hard when you're trying to help kids um, learn all that they can. That's a really difficult question that I don't know that I have the perfect answer to. But a lot of it is, is just not, not, at least what, from what I see is having a good communication. Kids do better when parents are involved. And helping teachers get the parents involved and making their kids be there and care about grades really will make a huge difference for all the kids in that level. So that's where I would say right now is we need to get parents more involved. Most of the kids who end up that way, um, and not reading well, their parents don't even realize that they aren't reading well. And they would realize if they were involved. And reading with their kids and, um, but some kids just have disabilities and and when you do have a disability, you can't always get to be as proficient of a reader as maybe you'd like. Like my, my dyslexic kids, their reading speeds will never be where the school wants them to be. But can they read and comprehend? Yes. My, one of my sons that's dyslexic just graduated with his master's degree and a four O at U of U. So it's possible to keep going, but it means kids need to work hard and they need to learn how to work hard. And that takes parent involvement. And that's why I really want parents to be involved in our new school district to help their kids achieve the best that they can.
Uh, and I, I'm all for parental involvement. How do we achieve that? How do we get parents involved?
You know, that's a hard thing in today's society where both parents have to work a lot of times just to survive. But making it easier for communication, I know schools try so hard to communicate. I'm in these meetings and we're trying to just get the word out to parents of what is happening at the school so that they can come and do it. It's a complex thing, but a lot of it is just allowing parents to come and be there when they can. And um, making them realize that reading at home is important and coming to the school and knowing what is happening with your child at the school is so important. Whereas a lot of parents don't realize what a difference they can make in their child's life just by being present.
All right. Let's talk some fun facts here. Um, where did you serve your mission?
Costa Rica. Beautiful.
That is pretty. I've been to Costa Rica. It's like Hawaii, only it's got these howler monkeys that make it a little louder.
Beautiful place.
All right. Now, obviously, you're way too young for this, but if you had to admit to it, how many grandkids do you have?
Just eleven.
Just eleven. Well, I have ten, so I'm catching you. All right. Well, almost ten. All right. Um, what is your favorite novel?
Pride and Prejudice.
Oh, you're a Jane Austen fan.
Very big Jane Austen fan.
My, my daughters might argue with you about Jane era, but you know, that's okay.
It's good too.
It is, I, I've heard it's good too. That's a, it's for my daughters. Anyway. Um, so that goes right into what's your favorite movie or TV series?
That would be Pride and Prejudice, the Colin Firth version, because the others are okay, but that's the
I, I have to admit, I have watched that one. It's, it's hard to call it a movie since it's like, what, ten hours long or something like that?
But so worth it.
Yeah. I, I have to admit though, the uh, the, the one with, um, I can't remember his name. He's a really good actor. I wanna say Alec Guinness, but it's not him. Doesn't matter. All right. Um, what was your favorite sport maybe years ago?
Well, I actually played basketball in high school. I was on the school basketball team, so I do love basketball.
Okay. You did any individual sports?
Individual sports?
Running?
Oh, yes. Sorry. I ran a lot until I had to have my knee replaced. But I did um, half marathons and ten Ks and I ran three to four times a week. It was so fun.
All right. Favorite hobby?
I love to use my embroidery machine. It's a lot of fun. Create new designs. I, the machine does everything, but I get to create it and push a button.
All right. Well, I hear embroidery, I think of Apollo thirteen, which is silly, but uh, he always has that mission controller, he always has that vest his wife embroiders for him. It's kinda cool. Yeah. Just, you know, I, I'm a geek, so that, that's me. All right. Uh, your favorite vacation?
Oh, that one was to the Netherlands to see where my ancestors were from.
All right. And y- your favorite comfort food?
Well, that would be chocolate. Chocolate makes everything better.
All right. All right. You know, uh, here it's coming up. You're running an election, which means at some point, there's gonna be a vote. That's gonna happen. And I, as a voter who live in your district, I'm gonna pull up my ballot. There's gonna be more than one name there. So why would I put my mark next to your name versus anybody else's?
Well, I believe that I have the experience, but more than that, I have an excitement for our new district. I'm very excited. I think we can be wonderful and really good. And I think this can be the best district ever. And I think we have to have people who want to make it the best district ever. And I do have the experience, but I also have a love for education and for kids. And I hope that you'll vote for me and that we can together make this a great district.